You know, why would they think that I had the policy that?
Here's to that.
Change is a big thing.
Uh.
Yeah.
That was a.
Robert, you know, damn it, damn it.
Sound like a.
And those.
Yes, but if my mouth faces. I go by.
She was a little boss.
Oh, and he ran.
James said, no, David, David, David.
He's just.
No, it's now.
So he was bad shape there.
It was tough.
It is, you know. They were, I told my thing.
What?
On your water. And we have still got now.
Kids in different.
Oh, really?
Money that carries.
Hmm, that's I don't need to. I'm kind of a holler ring, eh? The God's order. We would. All right, we do.
Let's pray. I have only Father, we cover this hour, thanking you for all the blessings you've given us. Pray for your blessings during this meeting, decisions that are made because of the better man of our county and for mankind in general. We pray for all those who experience encouragement for towards countries, Lord. We pray that all the decisions made today will be for the betterment of all of us. These blessings we ask you, your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
May the ladies. Mary. And you're the first father. You're the man. One nation under God, you and the Israel. You never change us apart.
I can still got a room full of people, but. My employees are sisters. We glad you came. Thank you. We appreciate y'all holding us. Our feet to the fire. That's very nice. If you have anyone that wants to speak in this meeting, provided you do, we'll need you to register and put your name and address with Ms. Daniels. And your phone number. If not, we'll carry on. Go ahead, Ms. Daniels.
We have, uh, three additions, uh, under section four, request board approval of Blue Springs Road Sewer Phase Two change order. Number twenty-four, request board approval to name Hamilton Medical as a sole source and purchase a ventilator. Number twenty-five, request board direction regarding placing an injunction against citizen creating a road blockage.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion that we approve the agenda with the three additions as spelled out by Ms. Daniels.
Got a motion, got a second? Five? Boy, it's pleasure. Move along.
Can't hear you?
Oh, I can't, I can't hardly hear Ms. Daniels. I agree with you.
We'll, we'll try to talk a little louder.
I'm heavy voice for that, cause I can't hear any word.
Think Brad's making some adjustments. Is that better? Okay, first up, we have board recognition of employees for years of service, which Chief Jeter will be presenting to Will Hamilton.
Morning. Uh, this morning, we have William Hamilton. anniversary date is five eleven of fifteen. The name William is German for noble spirit. Will's married to Gina and has three sons, Bryce, Evan, and Casey. Will enjoys taking the boat out on Compass Lake and Shell Island when he's off. Will ran his own remodeling and tile business prior to coming to the county in May of two thousand and fifteen, where he joined the facility maintenance department. Will currently serves as the maintenance superintendent for corrections facility. Uh, for his character quality, I chose, chose availability. He's making my own schedule and priorities secondary to the wishes of those I serve. Will spent many hours staying with roofing contractors while also juggling his regular duties of general maintenance and around the facility along with the unforeseen issues that have arisen in several instances of having current difficulty on time off. Will take on the burden of company and contract workers sacrificing his own personal time and family. Will also have a smile on his face and takes pride in finding long-term solutions, just not quick fixes. Will's demonstration of character quality of availability is assurance that issues can be addressed quickly when an issue arises and building that is occupied twenty-four seven has recently resulted in him being awarded county employee of the month. Thank you, Will, for your service.
No problem.
I'll stop. Go ahead.
Okay. Next up, we have, um, recognition of employee of the month for May and June, and Mr. Tim Perry's going to present these.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tim.
So Roden Bridge, we was tasked with getting the parking lot ready, I didn't endeavor. And so the whole time that we were out on that project work, and we had two employees that really just stood out in their work that they done. So we just really wanted to do something from Will and everybody else to just acknowledge those two employees that outstood most of the people. And those two ladies, they made most of the men out there look bad. So the first one that I'm gonna call up is Tammy. I thought I was gonna have to get in a dump truck just to show them some. First, Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And where Tammy Stanley began her employment with the county on August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, she currently serves as an equipment operator to a road and bridge and has been selected as employee of the month for May two thousand and twenty-five for the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. And where Tammy is a hardworking and dedicated and knowledgeable employee, every day she goes above and beyond her duties, she strives to be a leader in every aspect. And while working at Endeavor Comfort Convention Center project throughout the month of March, she led the way by hauling as many as three to four hoes more per day than every other driver. Her hard work and dedication to her job and specifically get the Endeavor Country Center project will have far reaching benefits as we would be welcoming visitors to the convention center in the very near future and for years to come. Now, for there to be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Tammy Stanley on her selection as employee of the month for May two thousand and twenty-five.
Chairman, while, uh, Mary's getting a photo, I'll, um, move to approve, uh, Ms. Stanley's fourth employee of the month for, uh, the month of May. I'll authorize a check in the amount of two hundred dollars and adopt, adopt the proclamation and, uh, authorize she was the chairman's son.
Second.
Then move in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. For approval.
And next, we must Victoria. And one day while she, I just want to say this, while she was at the work and I was actually standing by there by our supervisor, Derek Cruz. And she actually called him and she said, do I have enough time to get one more load? She said, can I get one more load? He looked at his clock. He says, well, if you could be here about four o'clock, he says, you could get one more load. And she got on back and she got one more load just so she could have one extra load. So that says a lot about her and her dedication. And it reads, well, Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And where Victoria Laundrie began her employment with the county on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, she currently serves as an equipment operator to a road and bridge, and she has been selected as employee of the month for the month of June, two thousand and twenty-five. For the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties and where Victoria is a hardworking, dedicated and knowledgeable employee, every day she goes above and beyond her duties, she strives for excellence every day. And while working at the Endeavor Convention Center project throughout the month of March, she led the way by hauling as many as three to four hoes more per day than the other drivers. Her hard work and dedication to her job specifically at the Endeavor Convention Center project will have far reaching benefits as we'd be welcoming visitors to come to the convention center in the very near future for years. Now, for there to proclaim that the Board of County Commissions of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Victoria Laundrie on her selection as employee of the month for June, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you, Tori.
So again.
We'll, uh, come on through. Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, offer a motion to approve, uh, Victoria Laundrie as the employee of the month for June, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Authorize a check in the amount of two hundred dollars, adopt the proclamation, and ask you to, uh, sign as the chairman.
You heard of that? But she got a second for Mr. Crutchfield. Uh, first, Mr. Donald Crowe. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, move on.
Okay, next up, we have Mr. Roy Baker.
Morning, commissioners and staff. It's an honor for me to, uh, appear in front of you, my home county. On behalf of Florida Commerce and the Rural Economic Development Initiative, that is the state agencies that meet quarterly on, on behalf of the rural counties in Florida. Uh, they're, they're by statute the group that recommends a designation as a rural area of opportunity, which is our ten rural counties. And all the benefits that go with that matching, uh, waiving matches of grants, special attention on, on grants and rules and things of that nature in the state of Florida. So they're, as I said, they're by statute, the ones that recommend to the governor every five years uh, to designate this region as a rural area of opportunity. They asked me to go to my ten counties and municipalities and, and get a resolution of support. And that's why I'm here. Can I answer any questions about it, if you have any?
No, but I will say this is certainly important to Jackson County. I know it is, uh, provided, uh, approved to be very beneficial to our county in a, a lot of different ways, as I think everyone on this board knows, and, uh, I don't have any questions, Chairman, but, uh, again, I just know it's a very important designation, uh, for, for Jackson County.
Anybody else?
I move. Move that we duck the resolution.
All right, move. Mr. Crutchfield, second. Everybody raise your right hand. We thank you very much.
Is there gonna be a motion for me to get two hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Everybody else got?
Everybody else got? You like to buy a loan. You like to buy a loan.
Okay, next we have a, a request for board approval of a resolution for grant application and management authority. This resolution would give the county administrator signature authority for grant application submissions. It would also give the county administrator or their designee the authority to manage the grant if awarded and executed by the board. So the board still has to accept the grant. It just, uh, makes the process a little smoother.
Y'all heard the recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
Chairman, I'm gonna.
Mr. Crutchfield, motion. Second. Doc Spire, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Move on.
Next is a request for board approval to set a public hearing for Tree Line Road Mini Farm Subdivision for May twenty-seventh at six o'clock P M.
I'll offer, uh, I'll offer a motion to approve, set a public hearing for Tree Line Road Mini Farm Subdivision for the, uh, May twenty-seventh meeting at six o'clock P M. I'll authorize that. I don't think it's a fire or a signal. I did want to base it.
Got a motion in a second to approve the for the public hearing for Tree Line Road. All in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, Ms. Daniels, are, are all these about the same?
Uh, the next one is the same as what y'all just did. And it just, just the next one is the same.
Okay, let's take both of those if you will.
Okay, so the next one is board approval to set a public hearing for sellers crossing subdivision modification for May twenty-seventh at six o'clock P M.
Some move, yeah.
I'm motion in a second. Doc Spire. Excuse me, Mr. Crutchfield. All approved, all, all aboard. Move along.
Next is a request for board approval for a temporary use permit for Freedom Springs Triathlon on July fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at Blue Springs Recreation Park.
You know. Board, heard your recommendation. What?
What's your pleasure?
Someone share more light on exactly what that is, please.
It's, they do this every year. It is a, uh, triathlon that they host there at the Blue Springs Park around the Fourth of July. I think they do swimming, running. Do they do running?
One of, one of, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
One is that, uh, that's kind of.
So anytime you're having a special event like that, that will draw a large crowd, different things like that, you have to have a permit for it because they have to have specific insurance and things like that.
That vendor.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yes. This is the vendor that's requesting this.
I'm moving, Chairman.
We, uh, we required to provide ambulance service.
I think we, this one probably does require ambulance service.
You're doing what happened, Chairman?
Yeah. And a motion in a second? All approved, right? Move ahead.
I'll just clarify, in the packet, it actually addresses that ambulance service has been requested. Board approval of exception to the Hurricane Housing Recovery Program Maximum Award. Uh, this was for a new construction in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It also allowed for additional displacement housing costs to temporarily house a recipient of this program. Uh, the exception request is for an additional ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars for temporary housing extension for the displaced residents of the home due to a delay in project completion. Uh, this was delayed due to inclement weather, supply chain disruptions, subcontractor scheduling issues, and funding constraints.
Feel like this, uh, deadline will serve the purpose this time, or?
I do.
Offer a motion to approve the, uh, exception of, uh, ten thousand, six seventy-five with the H H R P project on Elm Street.
Got a motion. Have a second.
Second.
All right, got two seconds. Anyway. All of them. Set motion in a second. All approve. Raise your right hand. Move along.
This is a request for board approval and appointment of the two thousand and twenty-five Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Those are listed in your packet. I will just point out the members that are changing. Um, the engaged in labor of home building, this is on page, uh, fifty-eight in your packet. Uh, that's going to be Lee Galls. Actively serving on the local planning commission will be Robert Arnold. And then, of course, uh, Chairman Westbrook will be the elected official.
Heard your recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion, approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Crutchfield. Second, my doctor.
All right.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All approved. Move along.
Okay, the next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion that the consent agenda items be approved and is, uh, submitted. I've had a chance to look through those.
Second. Got a motion in a second to approve all of every one of the consent agenda. All, all in favor? All opposed, same time. If you feel okay. Move along.
Okay, next we have Ms. Mary Carol Murdock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, it's time to talk tax certificates again. And in accordance to Florida.
We're out of money.
In accordance with Florida administrative rule, as tax collector, this is your official notification of the county-owned tax certificates for which a tax deed can be applied. This list consists of certificates issued two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-three. And it is quite large. We didn't print this this time, but we did print the certificates that are going to expire June first of this year. They are now seven years old. And in accordance with Florida statute, they, if we don't apply on those, they will become void and null on June first.
How, how many of those are there?
There are two hundred and eighty-one of those certificates. And the majority of them are Compass Lake and the Hills. Now, I didn't want to say that last year was the first time that the county had applied. And we applied for five. And the sales were successful. Those properties that nobody paid for, for years got into the hands of property owners that hopefully they will pay their taxes. So this is the opportunity, if you wanted to vote to, um, decide how many certificates you wanted to apply for. Uh, the cost to apply is three hundred dollars that you would have to pay the tax collector to get it started. We have a seventy-five dollar application fee and the title search fee that we pay the title company is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So initially, it's three hundred dollars per certificate. And then, once we get this title search back, notify the clerk's office of all those that need to be notified, then he takes it from there and he has his fees and he handles the sale. So.
Oh, great. Yes, sir.
What is, out of the five properties that we filed last year, was there a certain criteria that that had to meet?
They were specifically looking at the Compass Lake in the Hills properties.
Right.
And.
Just any, not, any in that large kind of thing?
Well, they, um, they, I can tell you what each one of the certificates brought. Okay, one brought sixty-one hundred. One brought sixty-eight hundred, eighty-five hundred, seventy-five hundred, and fifty-one hundred. It's what they sold for.
Fifteen hundred dollar cost that we, that we expended. We, uh, that was above and beyond that cost.
Oh, yeah. Well, Clay has his fees too. He, Clay, if we wanna.
Well, and, and, and they did. Everything covered, all the fees, paid all the back taxes. Uh, that's one of the things that you have to do, uh, if there are back taxes, of course, it's the county's a little bit different, but all five of those properties sold. Now, I think the administration looked and picked out five properties that were sellable, that, that they felt was the best properties. Uh, and now that, they'll have to tell you how they picked the properties, but I think that was the criteria that they used were properties that they thought would be redeeming. And they are bringing a premium right now.
And wait, what?
But some of those properties that are on that list, it would cost an enormous amount just to get electricity to them. So we need to keep that in mind when we're, we're picking out properties to.
So, so Clay, Clay, Will Ann, I guess the five properties that were determined to be selected were actually handpicked by staff recommendation based on availability of utilities.
We, we tried to locate that people would, could develop them.
So, and we've not gone through that process based on these properties at this point in time yet.
We're looking for a direction today, I think, on if you'd like us to pursue that again.
Can we take that off the bill of that money?
And, and something to keep in mind, and, uh, she'll be able, Ms. Murdock will be able to explain this better. But of those properties that are dropping off, the majority of those are still on for the, in other words, taxes hadn't been paid on them. So even though they're dropping off, you could still apply. It's the, the deadline is not really pressing to do it by June first.
Right, just those that are seven years old. And basically, somebody's gotten away without paying their taxes for seven years. They dropped. But now, those five that we applied on, they're in somebody else's hands and they will hopefully pay, keep the taxes paid. So it's, it's a good thing, um, to, to apply. And I was just thinking myself, if you need a dirt pit, if you need something, we can make a, a, a report kind of specific as to what you think you may want as far as land, homesteads inside of a certain city limit. Um, so if, if, if y'all want to decide today, say, let's try it again for five more, or say, let's go for ten this time, and then come see us, uh, between, uh, my office and Rebecca and the property appraisers website. We can see where they're located and decide which would be a good fit. Should you happen to own it, you know? But Clay says they're going, they're going for sale. So basically, it's to get the properties back and act again on the tax roll with taxes being paid.
Well, well, based on the success of last year, I, I don't mind, uh, trying to shoot for ten properties this time and, uh, see if we can hand select ten properties that fit the bill and bring those back to us.
Okay. Make an appointment with us and we'll get with you and, or you can get with Will Ann and we'll make that happen.
Suggestion or motion?
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Keep filling them. Maybe we get that bill in there. Go ahead.
Next, we have a request for board approval to use opioid funding for Cottondale Police Department. I'm not sure if anyone's here for that. I, I didn't see anyone from Cottondale. So Chief Richard Carley from the Cottondale Police Department is requesting to use nine hundred dollars of opioid funding, uh, for two of their officers to attend a certification program for operational readiness for addressing opioid use disorder and co-occurring conditions at the University of Miami.
Go ahead. This is an allowable use of those funds, it says in the report.
Yes, it is.
They would, uh, if, uh, if we give these, uh, four hundred and fifty would come from the sheriff's office and four hundred and fifty would come from by, by rescue. Their, their opioid.
So, um, yeah, that's correct. That's what, that's what we worked out here.
They can spend that money on anything they want to.
No, it's gotta be opioid specific.
With you. Them attending these classes is training.
That's correct.
Falls within that category.
And if we'll have that in writing, or they will?
Well, we're actually gonna pay this directly to the University of Miami for that class.
Yeah. Yes, sir. All, all other municipalities that have police departments, are they aware of these dollars availability?
I don't know that they are. We're glad to put that out. This was just something I had not really thought of. I didn't know there was a training out there, but we're, we certainly could share that.
Okay.
Any other police department we have, can we request for you or someone in our operation to write them a letter, make them available for them?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Offer a motion that the request, uh, be approved in the amount of nine hundred dollars to, uh, Cottondale Police Department.
Second. Got a motion in a second for the request. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same time, pass, move on.
Okay, next up is Ms. Sandy Martin with the Health Department.
Good point.
You've been provided a contract with, uh, between the Health Department or State Department of Health and, uh, Dr. Jeremy Lewis to provide dental services, uh, there at the Health Department location. The building, uh, when it was constructed in two thousand and twelve, the Health Department did dental services. Back then, there was a pretty high return on investment for, uh, dental services. However, the, uh, reimbursements have changed over the years and most health, most health departments do no longer have dental services available. Uh, Jackson County Health Department continues to have the dental bus that goes out to the schools and, and, uh, will see any kid, but, uh, we particularly want to see Medicaid kids or those without insurance. Uh, when we have to refer a child, um, for, uh, a Medicaid dental procedure, we're having to refer them to Panama City. We have a couple of dentists in town who accept Medicaid. One is no longer accepting new clients. Uh, one doesn't accept them under the age of six, and we see, uh, kids under that age. Uh, however, the, the dentist on our, that, that we employ for the dental bus is willing to open back up the dental office there at the Health Department uh, under this lease. It would not be the Health Department providing the services. We would simply house it. He would see our Medicaid clients, um, which is who comes to our building. And then, of course, he would see others, uh, as well, but that's what this contract is about. The dental suite has been empty since, um, I'd say about seven years now uh, because the previous health officer had, had brought in someone to contract. That didn't work out for the contractor and we've not been able to get a dentist. We simply can't afford to pay one to come, pardon me, to come for what we get reimbursed. And so this is a good way to get, uh, Medicaid dental services for children back in our building.
Yeah, currently, I think I understood you to say, Sandy, that the space is vacant now.
Yes, sir. It's been vacant for seven years. A beautiful dental suite. The other options, uh, would, would not be great. You know, would, it would be wasting a lot of, uh, really good equipment.
This is a, a lease. There's no, are they paying?
They, they will, they will pay for their share of utilities and, and, um, yes, for the utilities for use of the building. But no, we are not, uh, actively charging a rent for, for them to be there.
Dr. Spire, one of the hours of operation for the clinic?
I don't have that worked out yet. Uh, this individual has his own practice in town as well. He works with us on the dental bus and I believe he's looking for another dentist to come in to expand his practice to work at the Health Department. So I don't have that worked out yet. He just wanted to secure the space and know that he could do this prior to, um, you know, expanding out and trying to fill it.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve and a second from Dr. Spire. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, pass. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Help all the people you can. Thank you.
Next, we got a request for board approval of offered volunteer fire department grant matching fund, uh, match funding. The offered, uh, volunteer fire department has been awarded a grant by the Florida Forest Service to purchase bunker gear and some other items. The match piece is three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars that we have budgeted in our volunteer fire line item.
I have a motion. Second, to approve and a second from Dr. Spire. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, pass. Thank you, ma'am. Move it.
Request board approval of an amendment of a contract with KEIF Commissary to add cart services. Uh, this is a contract that we have at the jail that provides a number of services to the inmates. This would, um, add an additional service where they would actually go around three or four times a week escorted by an officer and allow inmates to purchase food and hygiene items. Uh, this device will help increase the commission to the inmate welfare fund. KEIF will install all necessary equipment and networks at no cost to the facility.
Here and move approval.
I aspire to move it too. Mr. Crutchfield, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along. Thank you, ma'am.
Request board approval of a quote from Inspired Technologies for MFA tokens and software. This is a request for board approval of a quote for multi-factor authentication hardware tokens and software subscriptions for the Jackson County Correctional Facility. The quote is for the one-time fee of one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for the hardware tokens and a monthly fee of one hundred and fifty dollars for the software subscription. This techni- technology upgrade is mandated by FDLE.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Mr. Bryan, I second. Got a second. Dr. Spire, excuse me. All in favor, raise your right hand. Move along. Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have, um, Board Direction on County Health Insurance. We have Michael John Milton here and, um, where are you gonna make the presentation? Um, he's got some information on our, uh, health insurance renewal. Thank you.
One, one. Met with each one of y'all this week, uh, to discuss the health insurance. As, uh, was discussed, claims are pretty bad right now. I've never seen them this bad. Um, looking at the claims through March, most recent twelve months is over a hundred percent medical loss ratio, meaning that a hundred percent of the money paid out in premium was paid out in claims. The, uh, in looking at this, I look back, um, high-cost claims report, you have twenty-four people that have fifty thousand or more paid in that period of time. Uh, have ninety-nine that had ten thousand or more. You have four that had over two hundred and fifteen thousand paid. And five percent of the group is driving sixty percent of the claims at two point nine million paid. And so, uh, Florida Blue looked at the renewal. Uh, they looked at it two or three different ways. One way they looked at it was for paid claims in that period of time, and they ran the renewal through January. The reason they did that is because they, they look at a three-month runout after that January period. So December through January, or January through December thirty-one, and then they look at January, February, March. Claims from March are not available until around April twentieth. So getting the renewal, um, is gonna come after that period of time because they look at that three, three-month runout. Uh, and so the renewal was handed down around April twenty-ninth. Um, one way they looked at it was a thirty-three percent increase. Uh, the other way was twenty-two point four. They've offered sixteen percent on the current plan. The insurance committee met yesterday, voted to move to a different plan. Your own plan's fifty-one eighty, eighty-one. They moved to go to plans fifty-one ninety, ninety-one. Ultimately, at the end of the day, what that does is it changes your out-of-pocket maximum. The deductibles would stay the same. The increase to the employer be on, and this is on three hundred and fifty-two employees. Your average employee, um, enrollment for the last, that, that recent twelve-month period was around three, it was three forty-two. I ran it at three fifty-two. Uh, the increase to the county would be around five hundred and eleven thousand dollars moving to plan fifty-one ninety, ninety-one. The increase to the, let me look here. To the employee's family, um, on the current plan would be seventy-nine ninety-six increase. On plan fifty-one ninety-nine-one would be fifty-eight twenty-four, and that's per month. That's a ten point eight-six percent increase on plan fifty-one ninety, ninety-one. There again, Florida Blue offered right up front because the county has been loyal, been a good, good group for them for a long period of time, a six point four percent concession, which comes to around two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That they're taking off, off the renewal. So, and I realize ten point eight-six percent with a little bit of a change in benefit is a lot of money. It is a fair renewal. I'm concerned it's not enough, quite frankly.
We were hoping you were gonna tell us something good. We, we were hoping you were gonna tell us something good first and last.
I hear you. I understand. Well, uh, you do have a carrier that's solid. That's good. You got a fully insured program, uh, the pro-share contract that you have, uh, in the past. They look at an accounting every two, two years. It was set at fifty percent, where you get fifty percent of any gain back after that two-year period of time. Now it's at a hundred percent. Uh, they have offered also to continue to provide a thirty-five thousand dollar wellness fund to the county. The county received back on the pro-share contract in the last several months, I think a little over eighty-six thousand dollars for the prior two-year period of time. So that would have been twenty through twenty-two and through twenty-four, I believe. So we're starting the second, the next year. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Michael John, give us those cost figures again for the employees based on the, uh, I think I'm hearing.
Employee or the family?
Both.
Okay, so at sixteen percent, uh, the employee rate would go up to twelve hundred and ninety-four twenty-two.
Yeah.
On plan fifty-one ninety-one, it goes to twelve thirty-six eighty-four. And keeping in mind, as I discussed with you, the reason the premium for the employee is as high as it is is because the county through the year has, through the years, has absorbed the total increase multiple times. And that, in effect, is also why your family rate is as low as it is. Right now, the family's playing four, paying four-ten a month, which if you call around and check, is probably pretty competitive. And so, um, you know, that would, that four-ten would increase to, um, four sixty-eight twenty-four, which is a fifty-eight dollar and twenty-four cent a, a month, or a twenty-four dollars and twelve cents a pay period increase in cost to the employee and their family.
And what would that result in additional cost to the county?
Five hundred and eleven thousand dollars on three hundred and fifty-two employees. You've got an average right now of three forty-two. Next month, I'm hearing we're gonna be seeing twelve new hires. So, you know, it used to, the enrollment was at three hundred and fifty-six at one time and it dropped, excuse me, dropped down to around three-ten, three-twelve, and it has slowly picked back up where it would be and it's headed in that direction at three forty-two. And in the last year, you've gone up probably from three twenty-four average to three forty-two. So it's ticking back up. So I ran the numbers at three hundred and fifty-two employees.
Now, this is for all Jackson County employees, courthouse people and all that.
That's the county employees, the, and the constitutionals, property appraiser, tax collector, clerk of court, and sheriff's office. And so in, in the renewal, we could get the renewal earlier, but if we do that, you're automatically gonna get a higher rate increase because of medical trend. So for example, if we got the numbers run through September and they got the, the three-month runout of October, November, December, we could get the renewal the latter part of January, but that medical trend is gonna add in there. You're gonna get automatic three, four percent increase over, over and above what you're getting now, depending on claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us the difference? And I know we talked about this yesterday. Can you tell us the difference than a, that an employee is going to have to pay if we approve is from current to when it goes into effect? Individual versus a family plan?
Say that again.
What is, what's the employee going to pay, whether it's an individual or a family plan? Current versus what is going to be?
On the premium?
Premium, yeah.
Okay, so right now, the employee doesn't pay anything on employee premium. The county pays a hundred percent of the employee cost.
That's on the individual.
On individual.
What, what are they paying on the family plan?
Four-ten a month.
Current.
Currently.
Four-ten?
Yes.
And what will that go to?
On plan fifty-one ninety, ninety-one, it'll go to, it'll increase fifty-eight twenty-four. So it would go to four sixty-eight twenty-four.
And that's under the, under one of the two plans that are being proposed?
That's under the fifty-one ninety. These are high deductible health plans. Fifty-one ninety is employee-only plan. Fifty-one ninety-one is the family plan. Currently, you have plan fifty-one eighty, eighty-one. Fifty-one eighty is employee plan. Fifty-one eighty-one is the family plan. Family being two or more. Employee spouse, employee child, employee and children, employee spouse and children. You can only have one spouse.
So that's going up fifty-eight dollars for a family. What, how much did you say that we were gonna have to contribute this time?
Five hundred and eighty.
It would go up about right at a half million dollars, five hundred thousand, depending on the employee enrollment.
And we'll be, we'll be basically, uh, going into budget knowing these numbers if, should.
That's correct.
Elect to renew with our current carrier.
That's right.
Can you tell us how much we, we paid last year?
Total? You might have that, the total premium paid.
You're talking about total premium for the year?
That we, that the county pays.
Can do the math really quick.
Let me see. It's right at five and a half. It'd go to, at twenty-two percent, it would go to six million two ninety-one. So at sixteen percent, it's gonna be, you know, between five and a half and six million dollars.
I don't think you understand what I mean.
Sarah, do you know what we paid last year, this year that we're in?
This year.
So around five million, it'll go to around five and a half million.
So for twenty-three, twenty-four, the premium, uh, on this pro, pro-share calculation was four million nine oh nine.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna, again, trying to wrap my, my mind around this, but as I understand it, if, um, if we elect to re- renew with our current carrier today and we go with the plan that's been proposed, uh, the cost to the employee will be covered a hundred percent by the county and the cost for the family plan will go up to four hundred and sixty-eight dollars per month. And at those costs, we will need to budget roughly around a half a million dollars to cover the cost of the county.
More than we have fifty.
More than we have, yeah.
That's correct.
Five million to, five million, five hundred and a thousand.
But I will say, and I'm not suggesting y'all do this, but you always have the choice to pass some of that cost on to the individual. Again, I'm not suggesting that, um, but that's a choice the board has always kept and made, but that's not a requirement. You know, if, if insurance ever gets to the point that it's beyond what the county can bear.
That, uh, I was just, uh, thinking about things as you're talking. That four million nine oh nine includes the family cost. So that's not all one hundred percent employer pay money. Know what I'm saying? You got over a hundred employees and family. So let's say for easy calculation, that hundred family units is included in that four minute, four point nine million. The four-ten a month.
Okay.
Dr. Spire, you want to?
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any changes to the deductible?
Say that again.
Are there any changes to the deductible?
The deductible will stay the same.
And that is?
The, the out-of-pocket maximum is, the deductible today is sixteen hundred and fifty dollars for employee, thirty-three hundred for family. Uh, the out-of-pocket maximum for the employee today is thirty-three hundred, sixty-six hundred for the family. If you go to plan fifty-one ninety, ninety-one, it goes from sixteen fifty to sixteen fifty on employee, stays the same. The out-of-pocket maximum on the employee goes from thirty-three hundred to forty-eight hundred. And the family deductible today is thirty-three hundred. It would stay at thirty-three hundred. The out-of-pocket maximum today is sixty-six hundred. Uh, it would go to seven thousand fifty or ninety-two hundred. And the reason I say or ninety-two hundred, I'm gonna go ahead and confuse you a little bit. You have embedded and non-embedded plans. Today, your plan is non-embedded, meaning that on the family deductible and out-of-pocket, the employee or family, any one member or all members can meet that deductible and out-of-pocket. When you have an embedded, a non-embedded, an embedded plan, then the employee and the family would meet their deductible and the lower of the out-of-pocket, which is in this case is seven, is a seven thousand fifty dollars. And then any one or other members in the family commit the, the difference between the ninety-two hundred and the seven fifty. And that's the way the plans are designed. That's not something I came up with. That's what, that's the way Florida Blue's plans are filed. And I know it's confusing. It's, I mean, reps get confused on it, so.
Well, you know, I would certainly like to continue to be able to pick up a hundred percent of the cost of the employees all possible.
And keep in mind.
It's a benefit that we, we, we use to, uh, help sell one to potential employees and it's a benefit that I think we ought to try to continue to do if it's all possible.
I can say.
I agree with that.
Anybody else? Are we all done?
Chairman, I'm making a motion that we move to go with plan renewal.
Plan like we have now?
Yeah.
That includes us picking up the, us picking up the higher part.
Yeah, well, and sure.
I second that.
I could agree with you. I just wanna be sure.
You know, all insurance is gonna be high. Not like a firm thing to say with what all they've been working.
It's that, it's that way. Yes. I have a motion and a second to approve the, what else can I say?
Everybody, are we clear?
Yeah, yeah.
Clear on?
What the motion was.
To renew.
To renew.
With the insurance proposed, plan fifty-one ninety, ninety-one.
Motion is the same as we are now, are the same. Motion is the same as we are now, or same as we were. That great.
The ancillary products, I need to talk to you about that just a second, not to confuse the issue, but the ancillary to include the dental, voluntary dental, voluntary vision, voluntary life, voluntary long-term disability are all at a rate hold. That's employee-paid voluntary benefits. The teledoc, telemedicine program that the county pays for is gonna go from eleven dollars a month per employee to eleven fifty-five. It's a five percent change. That's the first bump we've had on that, and it's been in place for several years.
But that was, but that, all that together.
Oh, that is all.
What you already quoted is correct.
Yes, and that's what the insurance committee voted to, to move forward with all benefits as they are today, other than plan fifty-one ninety-nine-one on the medical.
Got a motion in a second. Everybody related, and it's fine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate your visit. If anybody's got any questions, give me a comment.
When we figure out how to ask one, we probably will. All right, move along.
Request board approval to set a ranking committee for twenty-four, twenty-five dash fourteen debris removal and disposal services. Uh, we're recommending that the board, the ranking committee be comprised of Commissioner Donnie Branch, Rhett Daniels, Keith Maddox, Jeff Register, and Lucas Mayo.
Chairman, you heard the recommendation. Let's play a move to accept the recommendation for the, uh,
Dr. Byers, move accept recommendation. Have a second by Mr. Chris Field. Everybody read the vote? Everybody approved, raise a hand. Move along.
Request board approval of Poplar Springs change order number four. This is for the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and three dollars and twenty-nine cent for the removal of unsuitable material in the subsoil and replacement of the fill. It also adds forty-five days to the contract time.
Where, where these funds will come from? Road, road construction?
Yes, sir.
We have, have those funds available.
We do.
Sure. Offer a motion to approve the change order. Officer Chairman, uh, Mr. Westbrook, sign.
Thank you, I'll sign. Have a motion in a second to approve Poplar Springs change order. Everybody raise the right hand. Move along.
Request board approval of amendment to cultural facilities grant for the Jackson Museum. This amendment will extend the grant until twelve thirty-one twenty-five for the phase-one renovation.
Offer a motion to approve the amendment. Offer, I see you as chairman, sign.
Thank you. Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Second. By Mr. Chris Field. All in favor, raise the right hand. All opposed, same side, move along.
Request board approval of renewal for, uh, Roden Bridge twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero-two roadside litter removal with Collins Land Service. This is the first one-year renewal available of two.
Are we satisfied with the work that Collins is doing from a staff standpoint?
I'll let Rhett answer that, but as far as I know, we are.
Yes, sir. I just spoke with our engineer tech this morning, and he stays on top of them, checks behind them, make sure everything's good. Um, we did, or they did get out of cycle with their mowers, so they're trying to, the litter crew works so much faster than the mowers. We intended to have one right in front of the other. Uh, so that didn't quite work out, but we are satisfied with the litter service we have.
This is just for litter service?
Yes, sir.
This is, how long have we, how long have we, uh, been using Colin?
I believe this will be the fourth year. I think the fourth year, third or fourth year.
I think it's fourth.
No, nothing's recognized.
You recognize.
Okay, thank you, here. Is, is the litter contract and the mowing contract all except one provider, or is it two separate providers?
It is one provider, two contracts, because the litter, excuse me, the litter contract started prior to the roadside mowing. So it's our intention this year, um, that, to move them together into one sequence, so there's one cycle for both contracts.
Okay, well, well, I must say that I've been totally unhappy with the mowing.
Okay.
It has been embarrassing. You know, it's not terribly done. Like somebody blade thing be dull. Uh, they not maintain the same cutting radius that they have in the past, so I'm, I'm terribly dissatisfied with that, and I feel that we need some improvement in that.
Okay, be glad we passed that along.
They're not gonna make an improvement.
Okay.
And we request one of their representatives come from the board and let's speak with him a little bit.
Absolutely. I talk to the owner every couple of weeks, just checking in, so that won't be an issue.
Would that be said, factored out?
Yeah, right, but I, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I just can't.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Rhett, what is, what is in the contract? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's my fault.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. What's in the contract on, and I know this is separate, on the mowing, as far as the height?
Uh, I believe it's a minimum four inches.
Anything else? Can we entertain a motion with my suggestion at somebody?
I was gonna say that I, I prefer that they come in from the board before we vote to renew the contract.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to table.
I, I saw move that.
Got a motion to table. I have a second.
Second.
Got a second, a motion, a second to table this, and have them come in front of the board before they went through. All in favor, raise your right hand. Move along.
Request board approval of grant agreement twenty-five PLN thirty-two for adaptation planning for FD, from FDEP. This grant will provide five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred dollars for small updates to recently completed vulnerability assessment. And for the next step of adaptation planning, the completion is expected to be three thirty-one twenty-seven. This is, uh, the vulnerability process that you've all been going with through with Hannah Hart. She comes occasionally and updates you all, and it's a requirement from the state for future, um, resilience funding.
Is it grant money?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant, you want to speak? Did you want to speak up? Anybody on this end?
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donna Crowe. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side, move along.
Okay, the next two items are really similar. One is the, um, debris removal and disposal. This is uh, extending the timeframe with DRC emergency services while we are in the process of putting it back out to bid. And then number fifteen is to do the same with Series Environmental. If y'all like to vote on both of those at the same time.
The, uh, this will be under the same terms as the original agreement?
Yes.
Offer a motion to, to be a den, offer, uh, Mr. Westbrook, Chairman, sign.
Out of motion. What about a second? Got a second, but, Mr. Chris Field. All. Raise your right.
Okay, number, um, sixteen and seventeen are both also similar. They're both renewals, or one is for contract services of CEI. And they're, both of these are for the same firms, Alday Howell, David Melvin, and DRMP. Um, and then the other one is for engineering and design services with the same three firms, and both are the second of fourth available with the same timeframes. If y'all like to vote on those at the same time.
What is CEI?
It's construction, engineering inspection.
I don't do good. Have a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Got a second. Mr. Bryant. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side, we move along, pass, move along.
Request board approval of contract twenty-four, twenty-five dash oh-five engineering of generators of critical facilities with David H. Melvin Engineering. This is both, this is a grant-funded project.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
Where are these generators gonna be?
So these, the critical facilities, Rhett may know the list offhand, but they will actually be on like the board roof, fire stations, anything that meets the criteria for critical facility under the definition. You wanna add anything from where all they'll be?
Any update?
That sounds about right.
That's both caught out.
Must be a big one.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. All raise your right hand, move along.
The board approval of contract twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero-six engineering of generators at lift stations with David H. Melvin Incorporated, also grant-funded, and this is specific to lift stations.
Offer a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Chris Field, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side, move along.
Request board approval of an inter-agency agreement for emergency facility space with the fourteenth Judicial Circuit of the State of Florida. Um, in the event that they were unable to use the courthouse, uh, this agreement says they can use this space that we're in right now.
So, Mr. Bryant, make a motion to move. Mr. Chris Field, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Move along.
Request board update and direction for FEMA public assistance project withdrawals. Um, so I explained to all of you that this is a, something that happens whenever you receive FEMA funding. They initially, for small projects, just automatically send you the money once they identify and agree that something was damaged. Later on, when they, everything settles out and they, they review, there's a process where they review if they identify, or we identify, that something was also paid through insurance, um, then they withdraw that money because obviously we can't get paid twice for it. And so this is a very normal part of the process where some of these will start coming out. And it will, it will actually, as far as we know, just be reduced off of other funding they would have been giving. I don't think we'll have to actually pay anything back, as far as I know. Um, and so I'd like to just stick these in the consent agenda as they come up, if that's okay with the board, but I wanted everyone to understand what it is when you see it.
How quickly do you think you'll be able to determine whether we will have some outgoing?
Well, we do know we have a couple, um, that, oh, you mean if we actually have to pay it back? Uh, it's Lucas's understanding that it will just be reduced from funding we would have received otherwise. Um, but if that changes, we would update you all. Uh, but like right now, the Jackson County courthouse, um, it was identified that we had insurance proceeds that covered that project. And then something for the Jackson County Correctional Facility also. So, these are going to keep coming along, and so I would like to just stick them in consent, unless y'all want to discuss them, but it's, it's an automatic thing. There's no, there's not really even action for you to take on it.
No, is it a wash? It is a wash?
It, yes. I mean, it's money that we already received, and they'll reduce it off of future awards that we would have been receiving.
So that, it, there really will not be any outgoing funds?
That is our understanding. If that changes, we'll put it back on here for discussion.
All right, now that I understand this, I'm comfortable with it being on the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to, uh, include, uh, future, uh, uh, purchases or future, um, withdrawal letters under the consent agenda.
Well, you do.
And if you'll also approve this letter in here?
And, and I'll add to my motion to approve this withdrawal letter as well.
You, uh, comfortable with that only second, that was right. Okay, motion in a second. Approved. All in favor, right hand. Thank you.
I oppose.
I oppose. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right. Let's see. Got Endeavor.
All right. Request board approval of change order number sixteen for Endeavor Convention Center. This is a change order that reduces the total contract amount by three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents due to direct purchases and sales tax savings.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'd like to approve.
Motion to approve of Mr. Chris Field.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. All in favor, raise the right hand. All opposed, same side.
Chairman, we need to abstain from voting due to a conflict of interest.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, let's do that then. Let's move right on. No, 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 both, but.
Okay.
Doctor.
All right, we have a few additions to the addition.
Please, 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 please. I think we were instructed in the past that you had to discuss about what was the conflict of interest. I like to know what that conflict of interest was.
What do you conflict, you just?
We, as, uh, I explained, uh, previous meeting, we were engaged by David H. Melvin, uh, uh, engineering to provide architectural services for not only this project, but for the, uh, museum and also for the Next Step Academy. As I explained, uh, previously, we were engaged by David H. Melvin, provide these services, rather than me, uh, being elected as a, as a county commissioner and, uh, uh, coming on board. I spoke with, uh, Ms., uh, um, with Michelle, uh, counsel, and, uh, alerted, uh, her of the, the previous agreement. And so, anything that comes up that has to do with any of these three projects in the future. Of course, Next Step is closed out. Uh, this Endeavor Convention Center will be closed out pretty soon. Uh, we're also continuing to work on the, uh, museums, so, uh, anything that comes to the board relative to the museum or any endeavor, I'll continue to have to advise myself.
Yeah, that's, I just, I always, that's exactly why.
I understand.
Okay.
All right. Everything remain the same. Do we have to change anything there, Mr. Flur?
Okay.
I think that concludes this agenda, actually.
We've got a few additions we need to cover. Um, first up, we've got request board approval of Blue Springs Road Sewer Phase Two Change Order Number One. It's an addition of four feet paved shoulder on Blue Springs Road Sewer Extension Phase Two. Um, there's some other information in the packet. The change order is a reduction in contract price of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars and seven cents. It also adds forty-five days to the contract time to construct the four-foot paved shoulder.
So there's four-foot paved sho- shoulder. I saw Mr. Warrell out there was not included in the original bid documents.
Yeah.
And this is the, the entire length of the phase two, or is it just a portion of it?
Correct. Did, that's higher than the phase two, because it was already dead prior to us getting additional funding or approval to do it through Water Management District. And then it's a, it's a net deduction because we've already kind of deducted some contingent items out of it. So it, um, even though the shoulders were in addition of a certain amount, the net is a reduction, so. Anyways, I think it's all.
Still have to have another favor of, of asphalt.
There is still a friction course that's going.
Thank you very much.
That'll go down on it, and that's when the shoulder will be done.
From the bottom of my heart, thank you. I travel it every day.
It's, um, and then it's kind of.
Just glad to see it.
Yeah, kind of an update on phase one and phase two of that. They're currently doing CCTV at phase one again. Um, and they have to pressure test and line the manholes, and then we'll do a startup for the lift station and get it placed into service. And then phase one and phase two can start connecting houses on it.
What do you think timelines on that are? Any idea?
I wish I can tell you. Um, you know, contractor will tell us one thing, but then it'll be a month later, you know, on some of the stuff. But it is good to see that they are out there finally doing some of the CC, final CCTV on phase one. And that's kind of been the holdup on the project. Phase two's gone pretty fluently. Um, and so we do hope that they continue to bid on the future phases, which will be here shortly as well.
Thank you.
I'll offer motion to approve the change order. Authorize you, as chairman, sign. Mr. Westbrook, thank you.
I got a second. Mr. Chris Field, motion by Mr. Donna Crowe. Any discussion more? All in favor, raise the hand. Move along.
Next, we have a request for board approval to name Hamilton Medical as a sole source and purchase a ventilator. Requesting board approval to declare Hamilton Medical a sole source. Um, there is no parts to repair our currently held ventilator that is inoperable. This will be purchased using opioid settlement funds from the fire rescue portion, which were budgeted for use in this fiscal year.
Question, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, why are they the sole source?
This is, um, Chief Runer, do you want to speak to it?
Good question, Dr. By. Good morning.
Good morning.
I could hear the question about.
I wonder why, I mean, sole source.
Yes, sir. Hamilton, uh, sells factory-direct. They don't go through any third-party, uh, dealers for their product, and so they're have their own reps, uh, that they're buying directly from, or selling directly from their company. They don't go through any of the medical brokers or individuals there.
Where they located?
Where are they located?
Yes.
Reno, Nevada. But they do have a Florida rep that lives in West Palm Beach that serves the entire state of Florida.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, right.
Do we currently have a ventilator that was non-working?
Yes, sir. So in twenty, uh, twenty twenty, right at the beginning of the COVID era, we purchased six ventilators for our frontline ambulances. Uh, at the time, we, they were the, the, uh, best product on the market, uh. COVID folded that company via, uh, that company shut down, uh, its product and ended support of their ventilators. And, uh, the difference is the ventilators that we purchased for the ambulances are transport rated. So they're rated to bump and move down the road versus just sitting in a traditional hospital setting. Um, and Air Medical uses the same ones as well. So that company towards the end of COVID went belly up. They sold their product to Zoll, which is another EMS brand manufacturer for cardiac monitor ventilators. They decided to shut that down. Hamilton was not on the market yet and had not met FDA approval at that point. And so it was up until last year, they began, they obtained FDA approval and began selling their product.
Uh, the way I read this, I probably.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't answer the rest of the question. Uh, the, it has a pigtails that sticks out about three inches for the AC charging. And it's internal and that connection, that pigtails has broken. And so we were using a third party certified vendor that have to do a PM on it and repair that, replace that part because they have to open the ventilator up to attach it. And, uh, uh, reached out to them via email. And they have used all their parts and there are no longer parts available. They directed me to Zoll who, uh, bought that company and they said that if that company didn't have it, then all of them are gone. And so since they shut that product line down.
So is this a budgeted item?
It is.
How, how many of these ventilators do we have? You said there's one for each.
So we had six, yes, sir, and, uh, one's down. And they're also offered on this quote to, uh, trade in that product. Uh, the Hamilton is, so.
Doctor.
The total cost for the project for the new ventilator is eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. It was budgeted.
Is that the normal life of one, six years or not?
No, sir, uh, as long as they're maintained and meet the, uh, every year of recalibration, they can go on as long as you take care of them. Uh, upwards above ten years.
Maybe we'll. Maybe the next one we buy will be a little bit better.
Sir.
Maybe the next one we buy will be a little better.
Well, this Hamilton is the, is one of the, uh, is the only one besides Zoll now that's on the market that's transport rated for EMS and out of hospital use.
The service support, is it primarily from mechanical or is it software or both or?
Both.
Both.
They do the recalibration, most of it is essentially a computer in a box. And so, um, these, these newer ones, they're using wifi to push updates. Uh, but every year they have to go back for a recalibration and a recertification, so.
Chairman, I'll authorize, uh, Hamilton Medical as a sole source and authorize, uh, the purchase and, uh, authorize you as chairman's son.
I have a motion to, I have a second. I got a second, Mr. Crutchfield. Motion by Mr. Don Corrigan, all in favor raise your right hand. All opposed same sign, move along.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the next, the last side of them that Ms. Jordan is going to present.
I'm going to ask Mr. Daniels to, uh, get up and explain the facts behind, um, the issue here.
So what we have in, uh, in Malone, just south of Malone on Garrett Road is, uh, an issue where neighboring property owner has created a berm impeding water flow off of our roadway. Um, as of yesterday, obviously we had a wet weekend, road is inundated and a couple of feet of water. Not allowing the traveling public to traverse through. Um, there is an alternate route out, out south, the other end of Garrett Road to hit Ford. Um, however, if you go into Malone is quite an inconvenience and, um, not only inconvenience, it is a safety factor if someone did attempt to go through the standing water. Um, the background is this individual has been in active lawsuits against the county. And, um, so I've reached out to Michelle and asked what our options are to relieve the water, um, to its natural flow through this individual's property. And, uh, filing an injunction seems to be our next feasible course of action.
I might, I might add, I read and I underwater management district inspector. I was there and we looked at it when it was raining pretty good, but it wasn't, hadn't closed off the road entirely, but. Now I think it, yesterday it was just about closed off entirely, so I witnessed this myself. If I need to be part of it, I will be.
So, so just something I understand, I'm not really familiar with the property or the road, but, uh, the property owner has basically, in order to keep the water from flowing across their property, they've created a berm and that's caused the problem with the roadway flooding.
Correct.
Basically, yeah. And the water's standing on both sides of it, water's standing in his field beside. What he blocked off, but what caught from the rain. Is what we looked at and saw.
And historically, that water prior to this berm being created has flowed across that property.
Yes, sir.
With our knowledge.
And what a matter of people inspector was there with us and viewed it as well.
So all of the previous litigation has been the county on the defensive side and that's all been covered by fact. So that's been handled by, you know, different firms. The county was successful. Mr. Rogers appealed this all the way to the United States Supreme Court. This is how litigious this individual is. Um, I would put him in the category of vexatious. As far as litigants go, he's extremely difficult to, uh. It's not possible to negotiate with this individual and he likes to file, uh, complaints like bar complaints against me. Uh, you all might expect an ethics complaint from this individual. Uh, just wanted to put you all on notice that these are the kinds of things that he does. Um, he's. He has complained to me in the past to, uh, state senators and representatives, so you can probably expect complaints to the governor, um, individually. Uh, for any kind of litigation against him. But the basis of the past litigation was that Commissioner Peacock had authorized the deconstruction of, uh, Mr. Rogers', uh, berms that he constructed. And again, the county was, uh, successful, um, in defending against that litigation. But now we're having to go on the offensive side. And so that's, uh, where we are with, um, trying to seek a court injunction. So rather than put ourselves back in the position that we found ourselves in previously where Commissioner Peacock had authorized the deconstruction of this berm without a court order. This time we'll be going to the court to ask permission to have that berm deconstructed so that the water flow can be properly restored.
What, what do you think the timing of that process is?
No, we'll ask for, we'll ask for a temporary injunction, um, on an emergency basis. Uh, we're heading into what is typically our rainy season in the summer. We can expect rain just about every day. Um, but long term, it could be years. I guess that Mr. Rogers has taken the federal litigation all the way up to the United States Supreme Court and that, that's an extensive project.
My suggestion would be to a- ask the water management district to help us all we could, uh. That's, uh, more their line of work than it is ours. And I would, uh, suggest that.
And do, do they do that sort of thing?
Oh, every day. Yes, sir. And control well drillers too, most of them. So, a- anyway, that'd be my suggestion to the, to the board, but I, I follow the legal.
I think water management will be helpful, um, on the basis of, you know, expert testimony, um, analysis of the land and the water flow. Uh, but I don't think that they independently can just go out there and, and have him deconstruct that berm or order him to.
Well. If you looked at that whole berm that man put there, it's gonna be pretty doggone high. And the road, so it pushes the water back out in the middle of the graded road. And water stands on the other side of the road as well, but not from being hemmed up, but from just natural low place. So it's, uh, and in that area. Brett probably will agree with me that. That water gets away pretty fast in that sand, but it's, so it's quite a bit of accumulation of water there.
And I would add to, um, just to the north, we do have opportunity that we could just elevate the road and keep the water off the road. However, that presents an inconvenience to the neighbor property owner to the north who has planted pines. So I don't want to elevate the road, push the water off on them and then jeopardize their timber stand or vice versa. Shift the water to the west and it'd be in a, in an ag field, then that would remove several acres of production from them. So, um, we do feel this is the best course of action just to get it back to where it had naturally flown flowed for years and allow us to maintain the roadway.
And the more, and the more you add to it, the more it includes landowners as well.
If you put them on somebody else's property, they ain't good. And, uh, you know, we can't help a lot of rainfall, so it's gotta go somewhere. And, and, uh, I don't think we should block the road. It's a natural flow, been going his way all the time. They just have to deal with it when it quits, uh, that might be.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know the proper. Legal, uh, what we need to do about it, but that's what needs to be done, I think.
Again, my suggestion would be to do all we can with Northwest Florida Water Management District.
So, so the, the motion, pending motion would be to go ahead and move forward with requesting an injunction against the, uh, citizen, asking them to remove the blockage and then also, uh, use, uh, Water Management District as a resource and helping to defend that action.
Yes, sir.
Now, in the, um, previous litigation, we used David H. Melvin. Uh, so we have some previous analysis of the road conditions. It would be my recommendation again to retain them, uh, just because of their familiarity, uh, with the road prior to the construction of this berm.
Which district is this in? This, uh, yours?
Mr. Rogers is a property owner, but he does not live in Jackson County, so he is not a voter here.
I did, I, I personally go with your recommendation.
What's the property used for? What, what is it agricultural generating?
He uses it agriculturally.
Yeah, basically on both sides of the road. It's near the edge of the, to the corner of a field, but it's, it's ag on both sides.
Was that a motion that you posed? I think Mr. Crutchfield actually proposed it as a motion. Did you put, put yours in the formal?
I put a form of motion, but I will. I put a form of motion to go with, uh, Bernie Michelle Jordan recommends.
Clarification, that is, to go ahead and move forward with the injunction and then employ, uh, David H. Melvin and Water Management District as the resources needed. Second that motion.
Motion, I second. To follow the attorney's lead on the injunction. All in favor, give me five or raise your hand. Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, next up is other matters or matters of the public, if anyone is here to address the board today. Okay.
Is any, anybody, nobody here needs to speak? Thank you. Move on, thank you, have some yours.
Yeah, I do, uh, before I do that, we just wanted to let the board know that, um, on Friday, we're going to send a crew over to Holmes County. Was it Friday?
Um, so I asked Road and Bridge to reach out to Holmes County yesterday morning just to touch base with their, um, tornado efforts. And their Road and Bridge Superintendent has been in communication with our staff. We are looking to send, uh, several crews of dump trucks and, uh, different equipment help with their debris matters. They did not meet the state or federal threshold for relief, so. We're working on a volunteer sheet from county employees to send over for a few days and just help out where we can.
That's a, that's a wonderful thing to do. Those people are kind of in dire straits there and I have a lot of feelings on.
I'm just curious as to what, what happened?
Storm. Tornado.
Had tornadoes in the Estou area, um, northern Holmes County and, um, tore up several areas. So they are working, they don't have, to my knowledge, they don't have a standing debris contractor as we do. Um, so they're doing a lot of the work in-house and we did similarly last year in January, so I just wanted to reach out and see if we could help them.
They just opened a road to that, really. You don't need a motion on that, do you?
No.
Okay. Thank you for thinking of that, and that's the wise thing to do, that's very, that's very, uh, I say generous, by the way.
Because I've got. Get some, uh, direction, uh, I have been talking, yeah. I have been talking to, uh, Mr. Land about a, uh, a beautification grant that's available through FDOT. Um, and I'm, I'm interested in potentially applying for that beautification grant. Um, it has to be a beautification, uh, uh, centered on state road. Uh, they've got a workshop coming up on this grant on, uh, July the sixteenth. Can we plan on having Lucas, I guess Lucas will be the person that would need to attend that workshop since he would be, uh, putting that grant together. Can we have him attend that workshop, uh, maybe as well? I've been made aware of that grant through, uh, uh, ARPC, the Technical Advisory Committee. I think it's something that we might be able to, uh, do some beautification along our endeavor property, uh, since that's along the state road and, uh.
Be my question, I wasn't trying to pin you down, I just go ask where we're going to do it.
Yeah, and I think it would fit very nicely there, so can we have Lucas?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, I've got one thing I'm going to bring up. Uh, and I'm sure most of us are aware, but, uh, we've been losing a lot of employees. In state. A lot of Road and Bridge employees, as I understand it. I, and I know as budget's coming and all of that, I think we really ought to. We've got to do something or we're gonna be. We don't have employees.
We'll be running out of graders ourselves.
And you can't blame them for what? The benefits and the salary that the state's paying. I'd jump on it too if I was them. But we really need to do some, some deep digging and see what we can come up with budget wise. You've got what, four months to the budget? Five months? Yeah, we really, we, we need to look at that or we're gonna be in, we're gonna be in a shape. Well.
Mr. Chairman, I will say that I spoke with Commissioner Branch and Commissioner Crutchfield about their concerns and we are collecting some information, uh, to put before y'all as far as what the state is currently paying. Uh, you know, the, the reason you have to wait till October one, if you see the need to go ahead and make some adjustments, if you can find it in the budget to do that. So we will, we are putting some information together and we can have that to y'all soon.
Is the.
That would be ideal.
I was gonna ask a question, um, is, is the reason why they're able to go to the state because state employment is increasing in those areas? Or are they having a high turnover and they're having to replace employees?
Well, I don't know there, I think they've revamped their, uh, pay schedule. And increased it to the point where. It's just that it, it makes sense to do that.
Yeah, they.
For an employee.
They, as y'all recall, the state went ahead and implemented the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage when we were still at maybe like eleven. Well, they have continued to grow and so it's, I mean, it's a real challenge. It's a big gap.
The roads in Florida, uh, if you'll go to the committee meeting there, you'll see why they, all the money is in the roads and a couple of other things. But they really, really, really have a huge budget and they increase it every year and that's where that's coming from.
We're gonna continue to do that. We're gonna have to. We're gonna have to pay these people. I don't know, like I say, I don't blame them. If I were in their shoes, I'd be doing the same.
Absolutely.
But if you, if you.
Yes, sir.
Somebody gets that to us.
We will. Any other commissioners have anything?
Everybody, everybody finished, got everyone?
Need to make sure too that we aren't funding positions with revenue that's not reoccurring. And that can get us caught in a bind too. We go the way that we still have the responsibility, so. We go the way that we still have with the responsibility. So I like to see how many positions that we are funding through grant that's not reoccurring dollars. No guarantee anyway.
That's a good suggestion.
I know we do need to do something, Road, Road Department. So, I mean.
Agreed.
You know, you got, or you hire people on and then we train them, then they go on from there else.
Yeah, true.
You know, and I don't blame them, you know, it's almost double the money. You know, you can't blame them, but we're gonna need to do something. Uh, help get that up a little bit, uh, or make it more interesting state.
Yes. Are we all done up here?
Okay. I, I do. Um, I've spoken with most everyone here that I would want to talk to personally and have shared that I'm going to be reading a letter of resignation today, but before I read the letter, I just wanted to um tell you all that when I came into this position and had this opportunity, I really felt like God laid a verse on my heart um that I'm gonna read and it's in Isaiah forty-three, eighteen through nineteen, and it says, "Forget the former things, do not dwell on the past. See, I'm doing a new thing. Now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I'm making a way in the wilderness and streams in the wasteland." And when I felt like God put that verse on my heart, it was before Hurricane Michael. And then when Hurricane Michael happened, I could really see as time has gone on, how he has in fact really made a new thing in Jackson County. And we're not perfect and we have a long way to go and we're on a journey um personally and professionally. Uh, but I have see the change and the transformation this community has had. And I'm, I'm gonna read my letter, but I just wanted to say I feel really honored to have been a small part of that. So um with that said, I've got uh, "Dear Commissioners, after much reflection and prayer, I am writing to formally submit my resignation as county administrator for Jackson County, Florida, effective June third, twenty twenty-five. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Jackson County for the past eighteen years, including the last seven, in the role of county administrator. I am deeply grateful for the trust you have placed in me and for the opportunity to lead this organization through some of the most challenging and transformative seasons in our county's history. Together, we navigated the devastation of Hurricane Michael, the uncertainties of COVID-nineteen pandemic and numerous other complex issues. Through it all, I have been continually inspired by the resilience of our community and the dedication of our team. Most rewarding of all has been seeing the emergence of a shared vision that has guided our work for Jackson, for future, for you. This role has required a great deal of time, energy and commitment. And I could not have fulfilled it without the intentional support of my husband Ryan, our children Krista and Jonah and Lydia, my mother and father, mother-in-law and father-in-law, and my niece. Their love, sacrifice and understanding have made it possible for me to give my best to this community, often at great personal cost to them. These family members donated personally to the improvement of Jackson County. Whether it was my husband working on the generator for the jail after Hurricane Michael, my father-in-law donating meeting space so that I could host our leadership team off-site, or my father investing countless hours of counsel and prayer for this organization. I want to thank my mom and my mother-in-law for filling in for my children and prayer for this organization. Um, they made meals and they folded laundry, all so that I could invest in Jackson County. And lastly, my niece, who was affectionately, we affectionately call the nanny. She is wise beyond her years and has had her own investment on this organization in ways that you all will never know. I want to publicly thank all of them for standing beside me in every late night call, emergency response, long meeting and hard decision. Their support made my service possible. As I step away from this role, I do so with gratitude and confidence in the talented staff and leadership that remain. Jackson County is positioned for continued progress and I'm proud of the foundation we have built together. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I will forever cherish my time with the Jackson County VOCC and remained, remain committed to supporting the success of our community in whatever ways I can, with sincere appreciation."
Thank you.
Anything from the board?
Well, I would.
Thank you for yours. Go ahead.
I wish I said the same thing. I, you know, I've been a commissioner now for four and a half years and I've certainly enjoyed working with Willan. I think she's done a remarkable job. Uh, when deciding to run for uh county commission, one of the things I looked at was who the administrator was and was it somebody that I felt like I could work with positively? And uh she's proven that to be a uh uh, an easy case to work with. I think you've done a wonderful job. I was uh, when I met with Willan yesterday, I was certainly uh disappointed that uh you had decided to move on, but also very happy because I know it's uh, uh, something that you've thought through and uh there's opportunities in your future that you're, you're looking forward to. And I know this will be, uh, I know it's the right decision for you and uh for your family. So I certainly wish Ms. Daniels the best of luck and I know that you'll be successful in uh whatever you choose to do with the future. And I've just really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
I would also say we're very appreciative of the time you've spent here in the county trying to help better. Sometimes it's hard, sometimes it's easy. But we all understand that. And I'm sure you have a family to look forward to and to do what's best for them and I respect that and understand that. We, we appreciate very much, well, I appreciate very much the six months that I've been here working with you. And it's been all pretty darn smooth. So that's what I would say. We, we appreciate you, what you have done and we wish you well in your next endeavor.
Thank you.
Uh, right.
No, you go ahead.
I, I won't, I hate to see you go, but I totally, if you feel like that's what you want to do, I'm supporting a hundred percent. I've always responded every time I've ever inquired about anything and I thank you for that. I had to respond, I had to inquire a lot. Uh, and you've always been very, very good explaining things and I appreciate that more than you'll ever know. Uh, I wish you well, wish your family well. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
And have done for us.
Thank you.
Anyone you want to think, Mr. Crutchfield, go ahead.
I hate to hear that. I hate to see you go. But uh, you know, everybody has a dream to maybe proceed and if you think that dream is what you need to do, uh huh, uh rep, support you a hundred percent. And uh, you know, I always told my employees, if they were good ones like you, we had an opening, you'd get your job back.
Thank you.
You know, uh, I don't know if I'd ever become available or not, but I hope you good luck and your, please your adventure.
Thank you.
Without a dream, I'm perfectly wrong.
Just like I say, thank you, Willan, for eighteen years of services to the citizens of Jackson County and the last seven as administrator to the Board of County Commissioners and I wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We gonna wind it up? Yes, ma'am. About three minutes. You, we, we'll wind it up. We've been here a long time. Be glad to.
I know y'all wanna go. I'm just gonna, this was a shock to me. I want to say thank you, Willan, because she's always been there for the citizens. We can go to her. And you've done a great job. I don't think anybody could fill your shoes.
Thank you, thank you.
With that, I'm declaring adjourned. Thank you. See y'all. Ms. Dunn.